Silence your cell phones. And there are meeting documents on the end of the hall, or end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need listening devices, Robert ran out the door, can help you with that. With that, we will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approval of the county commission meetings from September 1st, 2015.
So moved.
Second, motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $322,363.45. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Any comments on the bills, Commissioner Barnes?
No.
Okay. We have no comments on the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Robert.
Madam Chair, I would comment that there are over 120 mental illness bills on this week's bills.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Item number four is reports. Item A is the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance 2014 Membership and Annual Report is on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number six is application for abatements. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is a notice from the Paralyzed Veterans of America, North Central Chapter, of intent to conduct a 50-50 raffle at the WH Lines Fairground on September 12th, 2015. Proceeds will support the PVA programs and services. And we do not need a motion on this. We just, it was just a notification, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And item number eight is planning and zoning notices. Item A is first reading and authorize auditor to publish notice of hearing on October 6th, 2015 to consider amendment 15-06 to MC 16-90, the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaw County to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to a Waterway Meadow Planning Development District. Property legal description as tract 1 of Prebs Edition, South 1/2, Northeast 1/4, Section 7, Township 102, North Range 49W of the 5th PM, Minnehaw County.
Yes, thank you. Scott Anderson, County Planning Director. And today I'm asking to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice and to set the hearing date of October 6th at 9:00 a.m. in this room. This is a request to rezone 10 acres from A1 Agriculture District to the Waterway Meadows Plan Development. The property is located about three miles north of Sioux Falls. This was at the Planning Commission on August 24th, and they had recommended denial, 4 to 1. And so there will be a hearing in front of, asking for a hearing on October 6th in front of the county commission, which is the routine action for this type of request.
Okay. Thank you. Item number B is the first reading and authorize auditor to publish. Oh, you need a motion, sorry.
Make a motion to authorize publishing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Apologies. Item B is first reading and authorize auditor to publish notice of hearing on September 29th, 2015 to consider an ordinance repealing of the 2010 revised drainage ordinance of Minnehaw County, repealing the Minnehaw County Drainage Plan and dissolving the Minnehaw County Drainage Board.
Thank you again, Scott Anderson. And this is a request to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice and to set the hearing date of October, or sorry, September 29th at 9:00 a.m. in this room. The discussion will be on dissolving and repealing the county drainage ordinance, which would then be replaced with a subsequent drainage ordinance that would change how the county deals with drainage requests, agricultural tiling. When we say drainage, we primarily mean agricultural tiling for the lay community out there that may be listening. And the hearing notice has been provided to the auditor's office, and I'd ask that you set the hearing date of September 29th, 2015 at 9:00 a.m.
Are there any questions?
To make the motion, I would like to comment, though.
A motion and a second. Comment, please, Commissioner Barnes.
You know, the revision makes our permit go down to $25. We still have some administrative things to do to make sure that a notice has been given to people downstream and to gather information on where the tile was placed. And I think that $25 is insufficient, so I'm probably going to make a motion to restore that to the $50 it used to be.
I have a motion and a second for to authorize publication. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number C is first reading and authorize auditor to publish notice of the hearing on September 29th, 2015, consider an ordinance to provide notice of downstream line orders of drainage projects and to provide for reporting of the drainage projects to Minnehaw County.
Make a motion to publish.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Scott. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Item A is DPO number 53827 in the amount of $5,588.42. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I may ask our state's attorney to comment on this as well. But basically, what we have here is a home that was sold, contract for deed, and the party buying it failed to follow through, and the property was restored to the original owner, at which time, though, liens had been accumulated by the temporary owner. And so since it's gone back to the original owner, he did not cause these liens to happen, and we are looking to remove them and clear the title. This has happened a few times in the past, and it shows one of the issues with selling property, contract for deed. And I'll ask the state's attorney if he has any additional comment.
Yep, just that under the law, there's some divided authority as to whether interest attaches with liens onto a contract for deed property. I believe it's your, Ben, your outlook on that, that that's unfair to the seller who receives the defaulted non-property back. So essentially, there's a quiet title action pending with this property to determine what the proper ownership and interests are in the property, and this is part of that process of clearing up who has an interest in that property. So I would actually encourage you to accept the compromise action as presented by the applicant.
Madam Chair, my motion will be to take it off the property and leave it on the person who received the benefit.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Is the applicant here? No applicant. I have a motion and a second to compromise the lien. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number B is DPO number 88284 in the amount of $472.50.
Okay, in this case, the county lien was, or DPO 88284, the applicant would like a release for, if he makes a payment of half, or $236.25. The lien is for two parents, obviously two parents, sent their child in for IVC involuntary commitment for drug or alcohol. In the past, these have been sort of, we've released a lot of these without payment because, you know, if I were to send one of my fellow commissioners, I would not be liable. But if I send my own child, I am liable. And yet, society is better off when people do take action to help their family members, just like their friends. And while the applicant has offered to pay 50% or $236.25, with the remainder going on to his now ex-spouse, I would make a motion to release the entire amount of $472.50. Look for a second.
Yeah. A second with a question. Is there, is there a second? Commissioner, or, excuse me, Kirsten, do you have a comment?
Just to clarify on the motion, it says to both parties.
That's what I said.
Yes, okay.
Second for conversation.
I have a motion and a second for conversation to compromise the whole $472.50. Commissioner Bennigan, did you have a comment?
I guess what I'm seeing in this, and it's not completely an accurate application, because there's some pieces of it that we don't have. You go to the, I'll find it here in a second. Page, well, it's page 2 of the application that asks for assets and all that good stuff, or a federal tax return, so they're not even talking about what kind of resources they have. But they evidently found some need to do this and a benefit for doing it if they'd have done it any other way. I'm not sure how that would have been paid for based on the fact, I don't have any information, you know, would it have been Medicare, Medicaid, Title 19, whatever? So it doesn't really tell us that.
I think, though, if I may, Madam Chair, the costs are for the legal process of involuntary commitment. And in this case, the applicant probably, since he was offering to pay what he considered to be his half of it, leaving the rest to his ex-wife, he didn't file all of that. At the same time, I, you know, for me, I remember an 80-year-old woman who had made $25 a month payments for like four years and still owed us $2,000, and she wrote us a letter and asked us to forgive the rest because she'd broken her leg and had to quit her job. And I also remember another case where a person was not sent for treatment and murdered their family member in a drunken rage. And so I see this as being a wrong burden to go against the family. That's my view.
Commissioner Barnes, I was a little confused. My question was on the, on the motion, too, is that he has offered to pay for 50% of this lien and leave the remaining apart against his ex-wife, which, is that what yours is? Because that's what I would be in favor of.
No. My, my motion would be to relieve the entire thing from both parents.
With no payment at all?
With no payment.
Okay. Just to clarify the motions, second.
Commissioner Heiberg.
Yeah.
And I understand Commissioner Barnes' point, just as a policy matter, he doesn't think that parents should bear this burden when, you wouldn't bear this burden if you were doing it for somebody we're not related to. And I guess my, my philosophy on this is that parents bear a lot of burdens for children that other people wouldn't bear for those children. Family members bear a lot of burdens for aged parents if you need to undergo a guardianship for that parent because it's in the best interest of that person. And so, from that perspective, I would not be willing to vote to completely, from a policy standpoint, be willing to completely forgive this. I think it's very honorable that this gentleman is willing to pay for half of the costs and that there was apparently an error on the part of the county, that it was incorrectly not assessed against both parents. And so I think I would be in line with Commissioner Heiberg, that I would be willing to accept payment and forgive it against the father, the applicant.
That's where I'm sitting. He's offered to pay 50% of the lien, and I think that if he pays 50% of the lien, we put the remainder against the spouse. That's what I would do also. Is the applicant here? And they just walked out, so I'm assuming that's not them either. So I have a motion and a second on the table to compromise the whole lien without any payment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Aye. Three to one. Is there a substitute motion?
I would make a motion to accept the offer that is being made by the applicant, to accept half payment and for, and take the lien off the applicant's name and leave it on the spouse's name.
Okay. So that's my motion. Is there a second motion, or second?
Second.
The motion is second for, to accept the, the application for the lien and to leave the remaining would be $236.25 against the applicant's ex-wife. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, three to one. The next one is DPO number 9945, the amount of $24,916.16. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're working me hard today.
Yeah, we are.
Okay, this is a significant amount, $24,916.16. So the applicant and his wife request a compromise and release in full with no payment. They're hoping to purchase a home after the resolution of this lien. The purchase price is $76,200, and the closing is scheduled later this month. The lien is quite old, but most of the expenses were incurred in the last five years. All are related to significant medical issues that one of the parties has experienced, including cancer and related surgery. The full cost of the medical bills exceeded, exceeded $69,000. And the catastrophic pool that ensures the county against large medical claims was used in this case. They have less than $2,000. In addition, they do own two vehicles. They have debts of $14,500 to the credit union, $1,500 to the care credit, and $3,400 to community health, and $15,000 to collection agencies totaling therefore $38,800. They're both working. Between that, their combined income was $53,021.80 last year. They currently pay $750 a month in rent. If they were able to purchase the home, their payments would be approximately $550 a month. If they, they've made significant strides to put themselves in financial position to qualify for this mortgage, and this would help. I know that their families had other issues with crime and stuff, and I, you know, this is a significant amount, and they certainly owe additional significant amounts. The applicants are present, and I think that they know they can speak, they don't have to stand up or identify themselves, but they could speak from where they are sitting and let us know more of how they feel on this issue.
Okay. If you wanted to speak from where you are, that's fine. You don't have to come up. You can just be right there. And you don't have to give your name.
Significantly, the situation started back about 1989. We lost our crime situation, and everything has gone and escalated since then, since the murder happened. And it just seemed like every time we tried to find a way of getting ahead in something, it always seems to come back to bites. We found out approximately four months ago that we owed the county $24,000. We had made arrangements with Mr. McFarland. He told us to hold off on doing anything with that until we could figure out just exactly how much and what we could afford to pay. Both my wife and I, we work, we should be working. I got maybe three years left in me, according to what the doctors say. She should be working at all. With her history of illnesses and everything, we didn't want to get out of paying anything. We paid all our lives for everything we have. Most of the time, we took us 31 years to save up enough money to buy a new car. And nothing extravagant, and I myself, I drive a 1988 pickup truck. So we're not, you know, we don't have the champagne taste or anything in this situation. But we always paid for everything that we ever owed. My wife, she took the reins and literally wiped out and paid over years through payments for everything that we have and in bills. We lost a house that we had for 30 years through some criminal people. And now we have a chance through the Veterans Administration to purchase a loan that we could possibly live in if something happened to either one of us. We don't want to be a burden on anyone or anything through the rest of our lives. But just given the chance, the situation just came about that with this $24,000 in lien, it struck a note with the VA people, saying, we can't have that. I'd be willing to, and she would be willing to, six months down the road. It was back to lien or whatever, but right now, if we don't have a lien against this, then we'll be able to look at a situation where we can get the house and live in the comfortable environment. It's nothing elaborate. It's $76,000, small house. It has been brought up to codes and everything like it's supposed to have. And then the rest of our situation is, it's really personal to us. We're finally getting some satisfaction with the gentleman that murdered our daughter, and we just want to carry on with the rest of our lives. By doing so, if we can get the lien done, other than being in public knowledge or whatever, I'd be more willing to give you whatever we could possibly afford to pay off whatever we can with it. I don't want, I didn't really want to dismiss the situation anyways. With her situation, we lost her, almost lost her twice. And the county has really given us our lives back when she, anyways.
Thank you.
That's, that's basically what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Can I have a little? I'm sorry. Can I have a little more explanation about the catastrophic insurance payment and how that worked exactly on this one?
Colonel Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. The catastrophic payments, any times a bill is over $20,000, we can send it on to the state. We have to pay the first $20,000 plus 10%. So this means there was probably $3,000 that was paid through the catastrophic fund.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'd be in favor of, of supporting this.
Madam Chair, I, I will make a motion to remove this lien with no payment. I tell you that, you know, it is a large amount of money, and certainly, I just don't see the prospect that we would actually collect it anyway, so, you know, why would we stand in the way of people living a reasonable life here? And so that's my motion, is to remove the lien without payment.
My motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additional comments or questions?
The only comment that I would make is that it seems like, obviously, those families had lots and lots of tragedy and tried to step up the plate to correct that. This also puts some property back on the tax rolls, if you will, out of a rental circumstance. And I think this is what county government's about, frankly. So whether we like the situation or not, I have no heartburn about forgiving this at all.
Additional comments? I have a motion and a second to compromise the lien in total with no payment. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And I would like to extend my sympathies. I know where you're at. I've read articles in the paper. And I also want to say thank you for your service. I'm assuming if you have veterans' loans, that you are veterans, and I thank you for the service to our country because there's trauma all the way around. So thank you very much, and thank you for coming. So, yeah.
Thank you all very, very much. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Go live well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Now we're on to opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak, it's anything that's not on the agenda. Okay. On to regular business. Item number 10 is consider a motion to supplement $33,212 from the Emergency Food and Shelter Program Fund to the Emergency Food and Shelter Program budget representing the 2015 EFSP allocation. You don't look like Janie.
I don't. Sorry. Carrie Venn for the Human Services Department. Every year, we've been being awarded through federal dollars monies for what's called EFSP, which is basically to help supplement budgets to extend assistance for those that are homeless. And so what we've taken this money for, the $33,213, we like to supplement our budget, and then we have actually taken those funds and forwarded that assistance on to the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House. The reason that we have identified that that's really a primary need for the community is because we now are doing the case management out of the Bishop Dudley for those homeless families. And so because of that assistance that we're offering the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House in doing the case managing, case management and giving them that $33,000, it has actually assisted us in saving our funds in our regular budget. We're probably about half of what we have spent on motel costs from what we, where we were last year. So by the Bishop Dudley being there, it's actually saving our funds. So in turn, we just decided to kind of do the pay it forward, and so the federal dollars then are now being forwarded on to the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House. So that way, their programs continue in turn, saving us funds.
This is a good example of how nonprofits or the community works with community government to make things work efficiently and not having a duplication of services. So we are very thankful for what the Bishop Dudley House has done. Absolutely. And know that they continue to work through their own issues, as we do, too. So.
Right, right.
Are there any questions?
Carrie, I'm embarrassed to even ask this question, but how many families are now at the Bishop Dudley House?
They have seven units that are for homeless families, and those have consistently been full since they started operations. We have probably worked with, I'm going to guesstimate, right around 50 to 55 families and worked on placement. We've actually been successful with nearly all. We had a few families that have moved out of town, returned to their prior residence, the state where they came from, primarily because they had support there. Otherwise, we've actually been successful in placing them in apartments or in other supportive programs so that they've been able to continue. So we've been very successful with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is the discussion of the South Dakota Association of County Commissions' proposed legislative resolutions. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioner. Robert Wilson with the commission office. And as you know, beginning next week, you will be in peer next week, and you will not be here at your, your weekly commission meeting for the, you'll be in peer for the SDACC annual convention. Or one of the things that will be discussed are legislative resolutions for, that'll be adopted by the full committee to take to the legislature next session for, as part of the SDACC's platform. And we scheduled a, an item today to just review the proposed resolutions that will be under consideration when the South Dakota, South Dakota Association of County Commissioners meet at that convention next, next week. And you should have on your Dropbox the, the full packet that we received from, from the association and the ones that will be, will be considered. I'll go through those rather quickly, and if you have any questions on, on any of them, please feel free to, to let me know. But again, this is just a briefing on the, the resolutions to be considered next week. The first one would, would make a change in the bridge sizes for township roads that generally are replacement, maintenance, repair is the responsibility of counties. And this resolution would change that from any, any bridge on a, bridges and culverts on township secondary roads that are currently 16 feet or more, take that up to 35 square feet, 35 feet, to just attempt to have township feet, to just attempt to have townships take care of a few more of those bridges on their own, rather than having the county take care of as many of them. That resolution came out of the Roberts County Commission and was approved by the Resolutions Committee, so that will move forward. The Oahu District brought forward an implementation of a county sales tax. And that, as you might imagine, that may be a bit of a heavy lift if it were to pass out of the resolution, out of the convention and go to the full, to the legislature. But that is coming out of the Oahu District, central part of the state. And again, the reasoning behind that is simply the limited resources that counties do have to support overall operations and looking for an additional revenue stream to take care of our many needs. Commissioner?
I have a comment on this. I think this is the resolution that came out of committee, that that increase in sales tax would only be on rural residents and not on municipalities, which is not right. And so there was, I mean, it didn't pass 100% even in committee. I just happened to be there in committee, I wasn't able to vote. And I'm pretty sure this is the one that only wants to tax rural residents and not city residents. Their argument was that there's enough internet sales out there to give us enough revenue. It's still not right. So county residents, I'm a county resident, drive to Sioux Falls and spend money. I drive to other municipalities and spend my money. And I put my tax dollars in those municipalities, and I don't think I should be stuck to pay the increase in taxes for the county just because I live in the county. So anyway, I'm pretty sure that's that one, isn't it, Robert?
You know, and I'm not, I'm not going to-
I was trying to briefly run through that too, and I-
I'm not going to argue with you. I did not pick that out of the language the first time I read it. I'm reviewing it very quickly here.
I know, that was the same with me. I think this is the one, though.
And again, I'm not going to dispute your reading of that, but I don't, I don't see it at this time, so we can-
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's the one. Anyway, if it's not, if it's not, it's in here, because that particular one did pass.
Okay. The next resolution would amend the date of the Annual Conference of County Commissioners and Director of Equalization. And we're currently, according to state law, at the beginning of Boards of Equalization. The Director of Equalization, she'll meet with the county commissioners on the first Tuesday of April in reference to the performance of the director's duties in, as a beginning of the county Boards of Equalizations. And this would, looks like it would be a housekeeping measure that rather than having, requiring it be the first Tuesday of April, it would be the first Tuesday that the county commission meets in April. As not, not all counties, county commissions meet generally on an every-week basis, as you do. Some of them are three times a week, a month, I think, some of them are two times a month. So this would just give some of those counties a little more flexibility in their, in their scheduling of that, that statutorily required function. Next one is, is one that came out of, I believe this one came out of Meade County. And I did, excuse me, it came out of the Black Hills, Black Hills District to change the minimum population of incorporating municipalities and define residents. And I, I'm sure there's a little bit of background on here that I, that I was not able to find.
I will give it to you.
Did a little bit of research, some Google searches, and didn't find anything. If you have the background on this one, I would-
I believe it came out of Meade County.
Yeah.
And the Buffalo Chip, I believe, is the one that they didn't have to have actual people living there. They could just claim they lived there. And I'm not even sure if they had to have a mailing address for there, but they had enough people claimed that they lived in Buffalo Chip enough days of the year in order to be residents of Buffalo Chip, and so they incorporated it as a town, which has caused problems for the county, significant problems as far as law enforcement and sewer and whatever, I don't know. There was a long discussion about it. So that's what that came out of, is just that there isn't a definition of what the voter is in a municipality or who can vote.
And, yeah, and the end result is that currently, there is an or that either have 100 legal residents or no less than 30 voters to be considered for incorporation. And this would, and this would be 100 legal residents with a minimum of 30 registered voters. And so it would apparently look to solve a, or deal with a very specific issue that they're having out there.
Madam Chair, you know, it reminds me, though, here in Sioux Falls, we have some precincts where thousands of voters are registered at a P.O. box and actually live in their RVs at unknown locations. It just reminds me of that issue.
We get property taxes from them, so.
No, they don't. They don't pay. They get motor vehicle registration.
Motor vehicle registration, that's it, yeah.
Which is cheaper here than anywhere else.
Right. At least we're getting it.
And I should mention that I'm going through all of the resolutions that were approved and that will be by the Resolutions Committee, and these will be, will go onto the full membership at the convention. This is one that came out of Manyaha County to provide for the redistribution of money in the alcohol beverage fund. And again, that's, I know, a conversation that you've had a number of times of looking to create additional revenue streams without additional taxes, a little trying to take a bit of the money that goes into that fund that currently goes to municipalities and to the state, and look for a county portion of that as well. I wasn't at the Resolutions Committee hearing, but I understand that it was maybe surprisingly well-received at the committee.
I think, I think the way that it was on our agenda was, this one was discussed before the increasing the 10% sales tax on alcohol. And it was kind of unfortunate that they were that way, because then they're like, "Well, we don't want to have two." So whether this one gets amended, I think everybody in the room agreed that the state is not going to share their alcohol tax with us. But possibly, if we get something back up to the convention, that we can amend that and go for just our own portion of the alcohol tax. But yes, it was well-received, and I think everybody, you know, the conversation was good, that we have to do something, and alcohol tax may be the way to go if they won't listen to anything else.
Ms. Heiburger, you know, on that alcohol issue, you know, every time we read about someone being shot or shooting off their gun at 3:00 a.m. or crashing their stolen car, it seems like the perpetrator is described in the final sentence as being intoxicated. And obviously, there are other intoxicants besides alcohol, but clearly, I also think that before they did their first dose of methamphetamines, they probably had a few beers. And we get no revenue from it, but we get all the expense of picking up the pieces after the party is over.
Okay. Robert, you got another one for us?
Yeah, and just a last point on that. I think you raised an important point, that just as, once items get into the legislature, and they're always subject to be amended and changed and take a little different forms as it moves through that stage of the process within the resolution process and setting a platform on the association level, same thing happens, and this may be one of those, one of those cases. An increase, a resolution to increase the various fees that sheriff's departments are allowed to, allowed to charge for some of the services they provide. This comes out of Hughes County, and again, is a revenue bill, as many of these are, as counties face some challenges in revenues to meet expenses. And this particular one was going to ask for some additional flexibility on the fees that are charged by sheriff's departments.
Specifically like warrants. And they went through that whole history of what they're getting for warrants and what it actually costs to serve a warrant, and so.
And then this was, the last one, I believe it's the last one, came out of Cottington County, and probably has quite a bit to do with some of their history of needing to, to build some criminal justice facilities that I think they're still working on. But this would authorize county sales tax to fund the construction and renovation of county courthouses and jails and regional jails. And would be, again, just a defined, limited sales tax ability to impose a sales tax for a very limited scope, and then would end at the completion of those construction costs. Again, interesting, interesting concept, and we'll see if it has the statewide support to move forward out of, out of the convention. And then there was one more on raising bid limits for purchase of supplies, where the limit currently is at $25,000 threshold, where going out for public bid is required. This would push that up to $50,000. And this came out of the Southeast District, our district as a whole. And then there were a number of others that were considered and rejected, but those are the ones that passed out of committee and will be considered by the full convention next week.
One more that we talked about that was tabled, but that might possibly come back is historic license plates. And I think really the Treasurers Office should maybe be the one that's targeting that. Right now, it's, I think it's $10 for a vehicle that's over 30 years old, but it, they put that license plate on there, and that's all they ever pay is $10. Well, there's a lot of muscle cars from the 1960s that are now be driven, or 50s, and they've got their historic license plate on it. And the rules are actually, they're only supposed to be able to drive those in parades. Well, people are not, in fact, I actually, I thought this can be a big issue. I actually saw somebody driving around last week, just driving around town with a historic vehicle. There was no parades at 8 o'clock at night, and there hadn't been any that day. And so it's just a revenue issue, you know, that people are actually driving these if they're more the parades. And it was suggested afterwards that possibly 50 years, moving those historical plates to, your car has to be 50 years and older to get that $10 parade only. Because, you know, if you're only using it for a parade, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to make you pay a full license plate fee. But there is, and they're seeing it more West River, where they said people are driving historical cars around with their historical plates on them in a way to avoid paying their taxes on their vehicles.
Again, not being at the resolution meeting a couple of months ago or last month, when, and I saw that one had been proposed and not adopted, I knew there were a couple of businesses out there that specialize in old cars, and I wasn't sure if it was strictly a local issue, a single-point issue, or if there were other-
I was surprised when I started looking. I thought, "Now I'm going to start looking at license plates, see how many you actually see driving around." Any other questions for Roberts or comments? Sorry, I had a lot of comments on that one. Number 12, is many county commission liaison reports, are there any? Commissioner Burrus?
This weekend, they have, or this Thursday, they have the water conference that Mayor Huthers organized, and after three years, he's now invited the county to go. And we will be represented there by the planning department. And also then wanted to momentarily mention our last joint meeting with the city where we did the budget stuff. And, you know, both sides had had budget presentations by these different entities. And so then we had to sit through, you know, 45 minutes of regurgitating numbers we'd already seen. And I know that Commissioner Benega enjoys that stuff, but the rest of us could actually find something else to do with our evening. I think clearly we could cut that time down to where we approve those budgets that we've already reviewed as individual entities and not spend our time listening to the enterprise fund versus the store fund at the museum.
I think that's something to look forward to next year, I agree. We do listen to them twice. And I think Commissioner Benega and Commissioner Bender were both gone, and it was you and I and Commissioner Kelly that listened to them twice, so.
I think that's good planning.
Are there any other liaison reports? Is there any new business? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner?
I have one. I attended the Southeast Council of Governments Board of Directors meeting, which I'm a part of. And they did approve next year's budget with a slight increase. Ironically, a lot of the conversation about the future is in reference to some housing issues. Normally, they sell about three to five governor's houses a year, and this year, they have orders for 20, which is a significant amount. And the commission, if you will, it usually is attached to those governor houses. The board has decided in the past and will continue to put that back into the house itself for enhancements or improvements. And there was quite a bit of conversation about what's going to happen, about relocating and how to make those, about 60 homes around Avera eventually, where they could go, the land costs, the moving costs, utility costs, and all those things, and getting them hooked up and how to make those homes affordable. It's a big project to try to make those things work. But anyway, it was very positive, because they had, again, the growth in, in a lot of different activities, so. But it was approved unanimously, which we are a part of, obviously.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Any new business? Then I have some old business with Robert.
Commissioners Carol Muller, just a reminder that some of you will be going to Yankton tomorrow for the Southeast District. I will not be going, but Robert will be going, so we'll let you coordinate rides and people getting down there. And then next week, we will not be meeting, the commission will not be meeting, because you'll all be in peer at different times for the county convention. And just to let you know, we do have a summary of who's going when and where you all staying. So before you go today, make sure we double-check documents that are out there, and I have an agenda for you also, so we can coordinate. The summer study will be meeting on Wednesday afternoon on Thursday. We have not seen an agenda yet for that, but hopefully will in the next few days, because I anticipate some people may choose to stay or to coordinate. Thank you.
It'd be nice if we would have a lot of county commissioners from across the state attending those meetings, because it is extremely important to get the word out that counties are in trouble. It's not just Manyaha County. Some of those counties have bigger problems than we do, if that's possible. Robert has some old business for me that I pulled up this week and asked him to cover it for me, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. And one of the things we've updated you on a couple of times over the last several months is the rulemaking process for the new Waters of the U.S. administrative rule. And as I understand it, there was a need identified following, I believe, a Supreme Court decision at some point in the last year or two, that either found a portion of the previous rule unconstitutional, or it was a court decision prompted this. And so there's been a move, effort led by the Corps of Engineers and the EPA to draft new administrative rules defining waters of the U.S. And through this process, National Association of Counties has been involved, as early on it looked like the, this, these new rules would substantially impact a number of waterways, drainage ditches, lagoons, ponds that are under the control of counties across the, across the country. And the update here is that it, after the full rulemaking process and the draft rules and the feedback period for, for public comment, the new rules were set to take effect about a week and a half ago. And the day, a day before the rules were to take effect, there was a preliminary injunction from a federal judge in North Dakota, staying that at least for a short time. And so that did not go into, that new administrative rule did not go into effect, at least not yet. Appears to be some question of if that injunction was effective nationwide, or if it was just in the, the-
States.
District within, where the ruling was made. The, if, at the very least, it was effective, is effective in 13 states, including North and South Dakota, most of our surrounding states as well. And it, it looked like there was an expectation that here, within a very short time, the judge who issued that injunction would clarify if that was nationwide, or if that was just within that particular district. Just again, NACO has opposed this- Just again, NACO has opposed this administrative rule as it's currently drafted, feeling that it's just, takes into account or covers additional bodies of water that had not been, been covered in previous rules. Again, drainage ditches was an example that's given. And NACO, the position of NACO has been just to request more collaboration with the Corps and the EPA as the, setting some of these rules and really trying to narrow down the scope of the rules which they still feel are overly broad and potentially vague. Again, as of, at this time, still trying to get a definitive word if it applies to just the district or nationwide. But that is the update on a process that we have continued to follow.
As a board, we have sent letters to our representatives in Washington opposing this and have had positive response back from them that they felt the same way as we did, that this is a very, have very negative impact on our state and other states. NACO has been extremely active in fighting this. And I think because of the fight that they have put forward, we will continue to work against these new changes of the EPA. They would put huge regulations on rural South Dakota, which we feel would be detrimental to our farmers. So at least right now, we have an injunction and it won't be moving forward, at least for us. And I'll just continue to watch and bring them to Robert and have him report on them as I catch those bulletins that come out.
Madam Chair, have you had an announcement to make about NACO or?
Well, I don't know if anybody else saw the letter. I was nominated to be on the Judicial and Safety Council or Committee. And so I've been nominated, means you're on the position. So I have been given a position on the National Board of Association of County Commissioners.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Give me one more thing to do.
Expect liaison reports.
There you go. Yeah, that's right. Is there any other old business? Is there, I guess that's it. Executive session, I have a motion to adjourn with executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We adjourned.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think. I'm not sure.